From the community, uh, watching the live stream this morning. Thanks very much for your attendance. This is our second specially called session for the twenty twenty-two business plan and budgets. We'll call the meeting to order at nine AM on the sixth of December, twenty twenty-one. And I'd ask the clerk or deputy clerk to take rule call for for the members present, please.
Thanks, Mayor Molner. Deputy Mayor Beras?
Present.
Counselor Esselton?
Present.
Counselor Gvezzi?
Present.
Counselor Luciani?
Present.
Counselor Parker?
Present.
And Counselor Roser?
Present.
Thank you.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. There's an agenda prepared for today's agenda, or agenda today's for today's meeting, excuse me. Um, I look for a mover and a seconder for the resolution that the agenda as prepared for the council budget meeting of Monday, December the sixth, twenty twenty-one be approved. It's been moved by Counselor Parker, seconded by Counselor Esseltine. Is there any discussion to that resolution? Counselor Gvezzi, please.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm seeking clarification. So, under six finance, um, budget deliberations, um, where can we ask questions? Additional questions that we may have regarding the budget and also, um, subsequent motions that we might put on the floor?
Um, part A, I'd refer to the interim director of finance, part B to the, um, deputy clerk, but I think that's why we're here. So I'd look forward to any response and I thank you for asking them now for clarity. Mister Puglia, please.
Good morning, Mister Mayor and Council. Um, uh, we think throughout, uh, item number six that, uh, uh, as council would wish, whether we can go through specific details uh, of the budget, or we can focus in on specific options that have been presented to council. Uh, I believe, uh, in some departments, last meeting, we did go through some of the details and perhaps not so much detail in other departments. Uh, so I'm open to council direction in terms of how how detailed of a conversation you would like to have. Uh, there are some items, uh, I believe a follow-up from the last minutes that, uh, staff can share. Uh, and then we'd be open to, uh, any questions the council may have at any time. And, uh, I believe, uh, Mister Mayor, we can entertain questions of any of any department, uh, that council council may have, or again, we can go through the departments in order of the binder and ask if there's questions, uh, in each relative department.
Yeah, I'm going to, um, make a comment and then, um, look for the clerks, either concurrents or alternative suggestion. Under six point one, there is a prepared resolution. If the resolution, uh, is put to the floor, um, as appropriate. And thank you for the mover and a potential seconder that they, then then, um, any and all discussions are appropriate relative to the twenty twenty-two business plan and budget as referenced by, um, Mister Puglia. And then, uh, the opportunity with that resolution on the floor, um, procedurally would provide for any, um, amendments that could be appropriately introduced as well. I don't know if that satisfies the direction of your question, Counselor Gvezzi. Now look for the clerk maybe for comment.
Yeah, I concur. Uh, the, um, as the Director of Finance has indicated, uh, it's likely, uh, better to review any, any questions um, that council might have with respect to the business plans and some of the budget detail. And, uh, again, we only received the one notice of motion, but that does not prevent other members of council bringing forward other note, uh, other motions as well in terms of, uh, what you want to see in the budget.
So I think the general intent and thanks, Counselor Gvezzi, is, uh, let's make sure that, uh, we've all had a chance to digest, uh, for a few days since we've originally received the information and had our initial meeting and that, uh, no bad questions and we'll try to, uh, keep things concise. But on the other hand, uh, procedurally, we have the opportunity to advance some of the things that individual counselors may, um, may want. Does that help at all?
Yes, just just as long as, I just wanted to clarify that we had an opportunity to ask questions and put subsequent motions on the floor. So I think I'm satisfied that it's there.
Okay. And um, so anything further to the resolution to adopt the agenda as circulated? We'll call that question. All those in favor? Oh, the resolution is carried. With that agenda, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest, general nature thereof for members present? Seeing none, just recognize that, uh, the broad scope of a business plan or budget may um, introduce something that individual members not aware of, if it's introduced by someone else. So, um, if that does happen, please be cognizant of that and declare at that time. Um, we'll look for a resolution to adopt the council minutes of our previous, uh, budget session of the twenty ninth of November. You have a mover for that or read that? Counselor Gvezzi, seconded by Counselor Luciani. That is, uh, that reads that the minutes of the council budget meeting of Monday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one be approved. Discussion? Mister Panak or Mister Puglia, relative, are there things in the minutes that you would like to highlight that have been advanced since that time? Since the meeting of the twenty ninth?
Information that I can show my screen on, just a couple items that were identified. Uh, I believe for the majority of the items in those minutes, it is the intent that staff would include in the December thirteenth agenda, uh, for council review.
Okay. Does that mean you are going to highlight a couple of things in the minute?
Yes, I'll just share my screen, uh. Can everyone see my screen there now?
Yeah.
Can you see the screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so there was just a couple items just wanted to highlight, uh, for council. There was a question around the percentage of the different, uh, tax classes. So the weighted assessment, uh, which is the assessment, uh, that is multiplied by the tax ratios that gives us the tax base, um. We can see the difference from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one, uh, so in twenty-one, seventy-two percent is residential, sixteen commercial, five percent multi-res. And the other cargo category includes industrial, large industrial pipeline and farmland. And I guess sixteen versus twenty-one, just the trend in terms of, as council is aware, just the growth in the residential class. Uh, so over the five years, uh, as a percentage of the overall pie, it's gone up two percent.
Any questions on that from members of council? Continue, uh, Counselor Gvezzi, please.
One quick question through you, Mister Mayor, to Renato, the healthy ratio.
Sorry, I I missed that. What was the?
What is a healthy ratio for a town to have, like, with the residential versus commercial? What's considered to be a healthy ratio?
Uh, that I would have to take a look at, uh, I guess comparable municipalities to see where they sit at, uh, relative to, uh, our proportion. Uh, I've seen in the past, uh, where residential has been around the sixty percent mark, uh. I, obviously, you know, depending on the geography, uh, and there's multiple factors as that to determine the proportion. So that's something that we can look into and, uh, bring back to council at a future date.
Thank you.
Anything further? Kind of remind both the interim director and the um, council as a whole that that, um, is subject to the comparables actually being responsible. It's one thing to compare another municipality, it's another to demonstrate that that municipality has demonstrated that their, um, ratios are ultimately effective and and efficient. Um, you had an additional comment, sir?
Yes, so, uh, just following from, uh, again, the inquiries from last meeting, um, just one other additional couple items. There was a request to have the capital project list in, uh, more readable format. So we have done that and that's available if, uh, counselor customers can see that much easier. Um, and I can send that out to council by email as well. Uh, we've now increased the size of the font for for that. Uh, hopefully that's more readable. Um, and the other thing is, we do have, um, some asset management maps that, um, may help with the discussion on the capital. So we have some maps, uh, this is a pavement condition index map from twenty twenty indicating all of the, uh, all the the roads in the township, in the town and the their pavement condition index. Uh, so I think it's a, it's a great visual to take a look at, uh, the state of the infrastructure. And, uh, we can share that as well. Uh, so there's a few different maps. There's, this is the payment condition index. We then have, um, this is roads by year. Interesting to see which roads were built when. And I guess to speaks to the age of some of the infrastructure. Uh, and then we also have sidewalk installation dates, uh. And there is uh, bridges, and then I believe water, uh, culverts. So again, I can send this out. It's available if throughout the discussions council would like to home in and whether this provides any additional background information. It is the type of information that we, uh, were looking to add for next year as part of the sort of ten-year capital and supporting documentation. But it is available now, uh, if council wanted to, uh, highlight this, uh, or have this information, uh, for this year's deliberations. And again, I can send this out by email so that, uh, it's, uh, available at your, uh, fingertips in your computers.
Oops, Counselor Parker, please.
Through you, uh, Mayor Molnar. I'm not sure it should be directed to, uh, Renato or if it should be directed to Carlos. How is the information on the road condition, uh, derived? Um, is it from actually driving on the roads or an assessing condition, or is it because of the age? I'm just looking for some more information on this and I think it would be valuable if we did, uh, get a copy of this as well.
Uh, good morning, Counselors. Uh, sorry, Counselor Parker, could you receive, could you repeat that question?
Yeah, um, how is the information on the, um, pavement condition derived? Like, do you guys measure the thickness or, um, is it just from the generated from the asset management plan? Like, is there a visual look at each of the roads that are on here?
Uh, thank you and to you, Mister Mayor. So for the PCIs, uh, we normally retain a consultant every, every, uh, four years to complete this study. Um, that information is provided in the form of a report. Um, they normally either complete a visual inspection and also they use, uh, I know there is new technology available at this point. Um, that they also drive a car and then the car is measuring the deterioration of each road. At the end, they provide us with the numbers, uh, and then based on those numbers, we determine, uh, which roads uh, we need to either, um, maintain or do a full replacement.
Thank you.
Further questions from members of council on the updated information as contained in the minutes or reference from the minutes? Call a question on the minutes as has been introduced, believe move by Counselor Gvezzi. I think it was Counselor Luciani. I can't apologize. Um, that the minutes of the council budget meeting of Monday, November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one be approved. And I believe that, uh, if I do not hear otherwise, that there's a consensus on the distribution of supporting information for council's benefit, uh, as information. Then we'll call that question. All those in favor? Oh, resolutions carried. Um, thanks, Renato. We move to section six, the focus of the meeting today, um, question that was asked on the, um, deliberation on the agenda. Um, so what I would ask is, is there a mover and a seconder for the proposed resolution? And then we will, uh, move towards further discussion. Uh, Deputy Mayor, please.
Just moving. You need a mover for the resolution, a mover.
And seconded by Counselor Gvezzi?
This is for, um, the resolution that, um,
There's a resolution that was circulated with the agenda?
Right, it was moved by myself.
It's got a mover on it, so seconded by Deputy Mayor, if that's okay, Deputy. The staff repair and place on the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one council budget meeting agenda and present to council at said meeting any options that identify projects that can be eliminated or cost savings that can be realized to bring the budget in line with option three. Now, I think the intent is if that's on the floor, then we'll open up the general discussion. Um, and then the options are available for, uh, summary information, general requests. What I would ask is if there's requests again regarding the, uh, business plan and or budget that, uh, members present, uh, reference a page number or a section, uh, so that everyone can allude to that uh, as best as possible. And then, uh, subsequent to that discussion, which, uh, potentially will take, uh, uh, you know, why we're here, then the resolution or any amendments to it can be introduced. Anything further to that? Then we'll start discussion with, uh, the mover and move to the seconder. Counselor Gvezzi, please.
Okay, thank you. So, I, sorry, Mister Mayor, I just do need clarification. So if there's some, once we deal with this motion, we are, we can ask questions, then when can we put subsequent motions on the floor?
I would suggest that this is the resolution that's on the floor, as we mentioned during the dialogue on the agenda. Um, and that if there's something to that resolution that you would like to amend, like, uh, like I would move an amendment to the resolution to add or subtract. So then that becomes a, an appropriate procedural bylaw resolution for deliberation.
Okay, so then I guess that I will have some amendments to the motion, um. I I thought we'd be able to put them on separately. All right, so then.
Well, let's not preclude that, but this is the resolution that someone brought to council's attention. It was just appropriately moved and appropriately second. And this is the opportunity that I think council has had for the last few days to deliberate on and at least ask some additional questions. So let's, uh, ensure that we all have that opportunity first.
Okay, so then I'll start with my questions first and we'll go back to that later. Um, through you, Mister Mayor to Renato, um, I'm curious to know if, uh, any tax arrears? And if so, what the total amount would be?
To you, Mister Mayor. Uh, I would have to get that information and, uh, and provide that at a later date or at the end of this meeting. I have that at the fingertips.
Um, through you, Mister Mayor, to, um, I'm gonna go to Carlos because it has fleet. So when a, a vehicle is identified as a pickup truck, does this refer to a two-door pickup truck that we're accustomed to seeing in town?
Thank you to you, Mister Mayor. Are you speaking of the twenty twenty-two? Cause I don't remember seeing a pickup truck in the twenty twenty-two budget.
Listened. Um, I'm gonna get the page number here for you. Page, uh, section ten, page four in the fold out. So this can lead into my next question. Um, there's a bunch of vehicles. So I'll ask the first question then. In section ten on page four on the fold out, at the top, there is a list of fleet vehicles that have been removed or deferred capital. The total of these vehicles is three hundred and fifteen thousand. Has this expense been moved to the operating budget? Is that, they're the enterprise vehicles?
So, through you, Mister Mayor, to answer also the previous question, um, so the fleet that is included, uh, the pickup truck trucks, uh, they are from last year that still were waiting for the delivery of these units. That's why I still showing the business plan. For twenty twenty-two, we only have a heavy-duty machinery for replacement. Uh, there is no pickup trucks on light duty. All the light duty equipment in twenty twenty-two has been included in as part of the enterprise, um, agreement and is included in the operating budget.
Okay, that's the question I asked. So those vehi- those vehicles, though, that are all listed for enterprise, those vehicles are all still coming to the town. It's just that we've removed it from capital and now we've put it in operating. Okay, so you answered that part. And then there's reference to, um, what they call just there are crew cabs and then there are pickup trucks. Are the pickup trucks two-door vehicles? Or are, is all the enterprise vehicles crew cabs?
To you, Mister Mayor, my understanding, again, at the top of my head, I need to look at the list that I have. Um, is that two of the vehicles will be crew cab and then two will be, uh, two doors. That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. If I may continue, Mister Mayor, it's still on this topic. So I did notice that there's a truck replacing happening at the airport. Um, it'll be an enterprise vehicle. Um, we recently contracted the airport out to a third-party Lumix. Um, will they be driving the vehicle and what type of, um, will they have insurance? Like, what type of indemnifying the town in case there's an issue?
To you, Mister Mayor, yeah, that is correct. Uh, the Lumis, uh, team will be driving this pickup truck. Uh, they also have insurance as part of the contract, the agreement that we have with them. They have provided, uh, insurance for five million dollars. And, um, yes, that unit is is due for replacement. Um, and yes, it will be used by 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 the Lumis group.
Okay, and I have, um, one final question through you, Mister Mayor, to, uh, Renato. At the last meeting, I asked if the town software was capable of itemizing taxation items uh, on a tax bill to provide more transparency and clarity to tax bills. Were you able to explore the software capabilities?
Through you, Mister Mayor, uh, our revenue manager has been away for a couple of, a few days. Uh, so I have, I don't have an answer to that yet. Uh, I would anticipate that it should have those capabilities. Uh, but I don't have the specific details of yet. Uh, and as soon as I have that and I can get a sample of what that could look like, I will forward that to council.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one, a final comment just about the resolution. And, um, in going through the budget, I identified a few areas of concern. Number one, the capital budget is increasing by forty-five point five one percent. This is a rate of eleven point six times higher than the rate of inflation. The operating budget increasing by one point three five, six million, a nine point one increase over last year, which is a two point three, uh, times the rate of inflation. Rec programming, which equates to almost a six percent increase. Um, however, we are going to be shutting down an entire sector, namely the aqua- aquatics department for renovations. Uh, fourth was the waste management facing a substantial increase of forty-five point five one percent, which is ten times the rate of inflation. And finally, the engineering department has an increase of twenty-seven point one percent, which is six point nine times the rate of inflation. So, um, just in going through this, I've identified, uh, those areas. And I think we need to keep in mind that people and businesses have had to pivot, they've had to adjust, they've had to do without and tighten their belts. The municipality needs to act in the same manner. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, please.
I was, uh, going to ask, uh, through the director, just for clarity, uh, to save me digging. I'm sure it's in the binder. Would you, um, provide us with, uh, where you would see as of the beginning of this meeting or the end of the last meeting, uh, based on the, um, the average assessment of a home in Tilsibur, what the tax increase would be, uh, not talking percentage of budget, but the, what the tax increase would be for the mean home in Tilsibur?
That would be in tab, uh, two. And it is, uh, the last page, uh, in tab two. Uh, so if you look at the twenty, that's, uh, it's page eight of nine in tab two. Title, twenty twenty-two tax impact on median typical property. So from the top, budget is presented through to the various options. And again, just to clarify, that's based on, uh, the active assessment role at the time the report was generated. So the assessment role will continue to change up until we receive the returned role uh, that we'll know, uh, at the end of December, early January.
And that number, and thank you for bringing that to my attention. I see here it's one hundred thirty-nine dollars, seven cents is what the annual increase would be to my tax bill, assuming it was a median typical property. And that's based on the information thus far before council makes changes to the budget. Am I correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Further questions, uh, comments from members of council, please. Uh, Counselor Parker, please.
Through you, Mayor Molnar, to, uh, Director Baird. Uh, in reviewing, um, section nine of the binder, uh, in the business plan, there's fifty thousand dollars for, uh, windows, the engineer report for windows and the lion's den. Or it's not listed in the capital project. I'm just wondering, um, where money is, uh, going to be funded from or, yeah, where where that project's going to be funded from, um, and, uh, if it is actually still in the budget.
Uh, thank you very much, Counselor, through the mayor. Um, that was a bit of an administrative oversight on, uh, my part. Uh, it was included in the budget document and of course Deputy Mayor Beras, uh, did speak to it last Monday when we went through it. Um, working with, uh, Renato and Shane, uh, we are able to, uh, add it back into the budget. The recommendation is that it be funded from reserve, so it has no impact to the levy budget as presented. But, uh, thank you for raising that. That was one, um, housekeeping matter that I was hoping to speak to today. So as it stands right now, uh, the project in concept is included in the budget, but the funding, uh, is not there. Again, it would be funded through reserve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Parker. That knocks one of mine off the list. And thank you, Director Baird. Uh, further questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Luciani, please. Yeah, mute.
Okay, I think that should be better in spite of, uh, the unmute button here not working. The other button does work. And it was through you, Mister Mayor, to, uh, either, uh, Director Finance or, uh, Chief Caskinette. I'm just, uh, just curious. I noticed that we've moved bunker gear from capital, uh, from operate. uh, from operating and then did an offset. And then, but I, I noticed that there's also still an awful lot of stuff that we moved from capital to oper- or from capital to operating. So we, we've done a flip, like, there's still some PPE in boots, et cetera, scene lighting. I'm just wondering why that moved to operating from capital. I guess looking for the rationale, I guess, of, of why did bunker gear move to capital from operating and everything else move from capital over to operating?
Through you, Mayor, to, uh, Counselor Luciani. The bunker gear, uh, the $15,000, what you're seeing from a bunker gear perspective, was moved to capital from operating. And this is more for logistical reasons. Um, there's been some delay with, uh, the receiving of the gear because of COVID and stuff like that. So on a capital, uh, program, it's, uh, cha- it can be challenging to get some of this equipment in. So that's why it was moved to the capital program for, for those pers- from that perspective. The other things like boots and stuff like that, there doesn't seem to be the same, uh, one, costs associated with it, and two, delivery issues. So, uh, as you can appreciate, if, if we go over the year in operating, the, you know, you're not supposed to spend money in 2022, that was earmarked for 2021 or vice versa. So that's really the rationale behind that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Esseltine, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, um, like to go back to something I asked, uh, Mr. Reyes about when we last met. And, um, that, that was about, and I appreciate, um, Mr. Puley has told us that, um, there is material available that will show us the condition of roads and things like that. But I was questioning why we were, um, repairing roads um, off of Tilsen Ave instead of some that had been on the budget before. And, um, I did go back to the, the 2020 budget and see that, um, the roads I was talking about, then Lincoln Street Reconstruction Detail Design was budgeted that in 2020, as well as Goshen Street Reconstruction Detail Design, Town Line Road Reconstruction and Preliminary Design, excuse me, as well as Ga- Goshen Area Geotechnical Investigation. Now, I'm just wondering then, was all of that work completed in 2020? And I appreciate, Mr. Reyes, you probably, I don't know if you were here in 2020 or not, but, um, and was all that work done in that year? And why did we not continue forward with projects in that area? Thank you.
Um, thank you, Counselor. And to you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Esseltine, that's actually a really good question. Uh, first, I was not there as part of the budget, but however, I was involved in the discussions, um, why this project was deferred. Um, so this project was originally planned as part of the Rockabye site. Uh, then, they, there was servicing required to that site. Then the first idea or the first alternative for that servicing was upgrading the sanitary sewer servicing all the way from the Rockabye side to, to the connection on Lincoln, I think, or that area. So as part of the works, it was planned to do a full reconstruction, uh, of the sanitary sewer servicing. And then obviously the road as well. But then after discussion, it was decided to a different approach for the sanitary sewer service in, in that area. Um, and then because of that was also decided that that project was not longer required. Um, then we focused on, uh, Francis and Lindsay for this year. As I mentioned before, there is also a great need of replacing the wastewater system in that area. And also do some work to the water mains as well. Uh, because of that is that the staff, uh, decided to, um, focus on this project instead and then defer the Lincoln to, to 2023. That's why we are recommending our budget.
So, so the detailed design projects were completed then in 2020, were they?
No, they were not completed. Uh, they were deferred to, to next year. So they will be completed in 2022, according to the new plan.
So nothing has been done there? Like the, the things that were budgeted for then in 2020 were not completed? Is that correct?
Yes, and my understanding, again, I need to go back to 2020 budget, but uh, I don't know if there was any money allocated for that, maybe just, uh, business plan, uh, because the, the design is normally completed by staff. Uh, we don't, uh, budget any, any monies for that, just, uh, salaries.
Okay, so we would be starting from scratch in that area then?
Uh, I need to double check, but I think we already have some work completed in terms of field investigation, so surveys. Uh, we have some information that we are going to use. But in terms of detail design, yes, we'll be, uh, going from the concept required for that area. And again, we need collaboration with the county as there's also going to be a significant work to wastewater and the water services on those roads.
So will we, excuse me, so next year's budget, then we should see money allocated for projects in that area?
That is correct. The intent is that we complete the design in 2022 and then we'll be bringing, um, the replacement of the roads in the 2023 budget.
Not till 2023. Okay, thank you.
Just before you leave that, um, Mr. Reyes, thank you. Thank you, Counselor Esseltine. Um, you're confirming that the, as referenced on page three of your PowerPoint, Lincoln Street, Town Line Road and Goshen Street, the design is to be done by year end 2022. What's the funding source for that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's going through my business plan. Um, give me one second. So, this is my understanding is that we only going to use, uh, staff time, so salaries, there, there won't be any additional budget required for the design. We'll be complete the design in-house and, um, and no monies allocated to the budget other than salaries.
Okay, and then I'd speak to the prioritization that it's got a Q4 in front of it. And yet we're expected to be doing the actual construction in 2023. Um, so design incorporation into 2023, I know we still have a lot to do in 2022. But, um, completing designs, getting something into a budget and then going out to tender potentially eliminates the early confirmation that would, uh, um, we're already waiting for, for 2022 for pre-budget approval type philosophies. So, um, is there, how firm is that Q4 versus the priorities you have in your operational department budget?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, to confirm, normally staff complete the design throughout the year. And then by the end of the year, we will have the tender documents ready, um, the cost estimate, the detailed design drawings. Um, we will go for pre-budget approval and then as soon as the budget is approved, so normally December or January, we tender that, that project. So the intent for this one is to complete the design by Q4 2022, have all the documents ready, the tender documents, detailed design drawings, and the cost estimate. And then, uh, as for, but pre-budget approval and early in the year, January or February, just go for tender.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, just for council's benefit and maybe all of our benefit, pre-budget approval through resolution of council has dedicated resources into an advanced budget to actually do the RFP and get out for tender. So it's not to say it's in the budget and we wait for the confirmation of the comprehensive budget to be, um, deliberated and approved in the new year. It's when there's a resolution brought to council proactively by, um, leadership on the priority capital items, usually roads, resurfacing, other things, is that once approved in a pre-budget concept, those funds are locked in and can be acted upon so that we're out in advance of the entire province approaching. So that I just needed to uh, reconfirm that and that reinforces kind of the background of why I've asked the questions in the past about pre-budget approval. Count, the, the final comprehensive budget does not need to be approved before those important actions of tenders take place. More for summary education. Are any other questions, Counselor Parker, please?
Through you, Mayor Molnar, to, uh, Carlos. What are some of the wastewater issues that might develop in Francis Street and such? If it's not addressed this year, I know that Lincoln Street was addressed or was looked at two years ago because there were major infrastructure issues over there and there was worry of wastewater issues in that area. And now that we're delaying it another year, um, I think that there could be some, uh, major implications to that. Um, compared to what we see over on Francis Street. I grew up on Francis Street and I know the road doesn't need to be redone right now. The infrastructure underneath might, but the road itself is still in decent condition. So if you could shed some light on why the need to get Francis Street done now and not address Lincoln Street?
Thank you, Counselor Parker. And to you, Mr. Mayor, um, one of the issues that we have on Francis and also Lindsay, first is the age of the, of the sanitary sewers. They are really old and, and due for replacement. Uh, my understanding from staff is that they have been sun, um, the, the pipes are the material that were used back in the day and also the construction, um, activities that were performed back in the day. Uh, they are, we have, we are seeing some significant infiltration for wastewater, so that's why one of the recommendations. Also, the height, like the sewer is not too deep, so we need to lower the invert or the sanitary sewers in order to comply with newest regulation. Um, and those are one of the, the main reasons why this project was recommended for this year.
Sorry, follow-up.
Um, thank you, Carlos, for the Francis Street information. So do you think that Francis Street is in worse shape than Lincoln Street is right now?
To you, Mr. Mayor, they are about the same. They were constructed, oh, I think at the same, uh, time or really close. Again, this is one of the priorities that has been identified by staff for replacement. Um, as I mentioned before, the driver for this replacement is not the road, are the services underneath.
Thanks.
Further for members of council? Um, thanks, Counselor Parker. Um, you know, I would have personally put my, you know, what we don't see below the ground, it's like the iceberg, um, which is oftentimes extremely, uh, more important than what we see above. But, um, in supporting the direction in 2022, I would, uh, suggest we put extreme emphasis on 2023 so that not just residents and businesses in the area, uh, recognize that, uh, council's committed this. Kind of leans a bit to something I may have more apprehensions about is the, is a 10-year plan. But if it's focused on capital, that's a little different and relative to matching up with a responsible asset management plan. But not to, I, you know, not to, uh, I think your questions are extremely important and, um, with the limited resources that municipalities have right across this province. It's incumbent upon us to, to ensure we're, we're prioritizing and doing what's, uh, what's best. Um, are there further questions? I had some, I'll just, are there any further questions, Counselor Gobazy? Did you have an additional one? Yeah, please.
Thank you, um, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to continue on Francis Street, I did have one quick question. This is the entire road because I feel like part of that road probably has a newer section because it used to be a dead-end road.
Thank you, Counselor Gobazy. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so it will be from Tilsen Ave. Just give a second, I need to open the map here. So the replacement of Francis is from Tilsen Ave all the way to Carolene.
And if I may continue through you, Mr. Mayor, to Carlos, I that the end closer to Carolene would be newer?
So, Mr. Mayor, you're allowed me, I'm going to consult with the manager of engineering and I will reply to that location where we're going to end that construction.
I have one final question through you, Mr. Mayor, to Carlos. Sorry, I forgot to ask it earlier. It's regarding the enterprise vehicles. So the total cost of 315,000, is this for just the one-year lease? Or is, is that money for like the entire, um, life of the lease of those vehicles? And if it's for this year, what is, will at the same cost be added into operating next year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, maybe I'm going to defer to, to Shane's finishing because I'm having a hard time just to understand where the 350,000 is coming from. Um, I know for next year, our estimate is going to be close to $45,000 just for the lease of the six units that will be replaced in 2020, in 2022. Uh, so I don't know, Shane, you can confirm where is that number coming from?
Uh, through you, uh, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Gil Baze. So on page, on tab 10, um, page, what is it? Page four, uh, so during, uh, staff's capital prep for the 2022 budget, uh, um, we had those projects included i- in the draft capital proj- uh, summary. But as a report went to council on the enterprise services leasing, uh, as council approved, then these projects were removed. So the town didn't have to outright replace these, uh, and purchase these, uh, vehicles. So that's the 315,000 that Counselor Gil Baze is, uh, referring to. Um, but those costs now, the town doesn't have to purchase, we're just leasing, uh, those, uh, particular units um, through the operating budget. So as Carlos, uh, has spoken to, uh, the 315,000 isn't in the operating budget, it would be much less um, in terms of the lease cost. This was, if council didn't approve the enterprise service contract, then I'm assuming these projects would have been still in the draft capital, um, 2022 budget, uh, but considering the lease agreement with enterprise services was, uh, approved, then we, uh, staff removed these projects from the capital project. And now the, the leasing costs are included in the operating budget is my understanding, if that answers your question.
Okay, yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up. So what is the lease cost and for how many years?
Thank you to you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so it varies. Uh, I don't have this number in front of me, but I, uh, it is about $7,000 for each fleet. Um, that's an average, as, sorry, $9,000 each fleet in average. And that's for, for the year. That's assuming that we are going to lease the fleet on Jan- starting on January. Um, most of the fleet, um, we received confirmation that it will be delivered by May, uh, or after May. So we only need to account for the months that we'll be using the fleet. But an average is about $800 monthly uh, for, for each fleet. Uh, for next year, we are planning to replace six units. Um, also the, the terms for that lease varies, uh, from two to four years. Um, my understanding is for the six units that we're going to be leasing on 2022, we're going to enter into a two-year lease. Um, but again, that's information that I have. Right now I need to go in detail and review each, each lease and get back to council.
Okay, through you, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up?
Please.
Um, so that, so 9,000 of vehicles times seven vehicles is $63,000 dollars, um, a year for two years. So 6, 63,000, so 126,000 for two years. And, uh, typically when we purchase a vehicle, um, we would keep them for what would be the average lifespan of a vehicle?
According to the asset management plan will be uh eight years. But also that lease also include the maintenance, so all the maintenance is included as part of the agreement. There won't be any any expenses in terms of maintenance. Any maintenance that need to be completed in the fleet will be covered by it by the lease agreement.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I just, I just have maybe a general comment. Um, I'm not sure how we're going to attract um track how the efficiency of this program moving forward, because just punching out the dollars like in effect you know, spent 315,000 now and had an eight-year uh lifespan. Sorry, I'm just doing, that works out to 39,375 a year versus 63,000. So I'm just, um, anyways, I'm not sure how we're gonna track the efficiency of this program moving forward, but that's just my general comment. Thank you.
And sorry, Mr. Mayor, to answer that that comment, to provide additional reference to that comment, uh, we're hoping to provide to report to council uh every year, yes, with the with the summary of expenses and efficiencies from this program.
And, okay, uh, Councilor Rosehart, then I had a follow-up to to that as well. So, Councilor Rosehart, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To you to Carlos. So Carlos, is the maintenance repairs and on our, on those vehicles going to be paid to our employees? So are we going to be recouping money for doing the work on those vehicles as well?
Thank you to you, Mr. Mayor. So all the new fleet that we are entering as part of the agreement with enterprise, the maintenance will be um included in the agreement and will be completed in any of the uh, the mechanics in town, so we won't use any staff time or resources for that. It will be all uh sourced out.
So the mechanics that we have onboard are not going to be doing the maintenance on the fleets that's being done right now? What are, what are they going to do with their time if they're doing that already?
They won't be completing any maintenance on the six units that we're gonna be part of uh of the new agreement with enterprise. But they will be completing the maintenance for any other fleet, especially the heavy-duty equipment uh and all the light duty that is not part of this agreement. But only for, only for the six fleets that we are um, we are, we are getting next year for those six units. Um, the maintenance is included as part of the lease agreement.
So just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, so the small trucks that we're leasing will be contracted up to another business in the community?
For the maintenance and maintenance, yes, that that is correct.
Thank you.
And to confirm, that's been paid for in the agreement the councils already support.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, the one thing I would encourage, and I would encourage it sooner than later, but I'll, I'm not gonna get lost on this. Council's given direction on this. Um, so um, we, that that's full respect and thank you uh for implementing it. But I think um somewhere, I don't know what kind, uh, you've mentioned an annual review. I think once we get through the first quarter 2022, there's enough meat on that bone to have uh, you know, kind of a bit of a comprehensive understanding, maybe more of it for education on how that relationship is ultimately impacting capital versus operational versus HR versus other things. So it was one thing to look at it and and accept the presentation and move in this creative direction, but now that we're moving down that path, uh, I think it's imperative that we understand fully how it impacts the financials uh the way we're looking at them right now. So maybe more than just more so just a comment. Um, anything further for members of council? Okay, I got a uh general things and then some specific hits, bear with me, please. Um, has there been uh through, first of all, through to the interim director of finance, any um amendments or anticipated um year-end confirmation of 2021 uh surplus or deficit?
Not at the moment. Uh, again, we would have to, we'll be working with each department to have each department do year-end projections on their individual areas. Uh, and we hope to be able to have that uh for the next budget meeting.
So prior to year-end, which there can't be a lot of change, I know it's a lot of work, but it's also a number that's anticipated on an annualized basis because it greatly assists for dealing with this at the county level as well. There've been some funds that haven't been spent that are carryover for uh, you know, for projects, uh, both operational and capital. But um, there's also um kind of respect to some of the comments that have been made in general is that uh the community is still facing uh various um, you know, i- if we've taxed for something and there wasn't a realistic requirement to utilize it, an incremental increase on something we haven't spent is not an equitable approach. So it's an out-understanding where those marginal um variances uh to requirements in 2021 were if there is a recognizable or at least a general comment on the surpluses. So I look forward to that. Uh, where in, and I apologize, where in this binder, this comprehensive binder, extremely well put together, thank you to you, thank you to your uh, uh, Shane, the entire uh team really, is our um uh summary of reserves. Which, I apologize when frontwards, backwards, maybe. A direct question to the interim director of fin- or any assistance from the finance department?
You be able to, I don't know which tab that is under, uh, go ahead, Shane.
Oh, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, it, the summary is in uh tab one, um, which I'm not sure if is included in the binder because it was under the 2022 budget overview presentation that Renato did on November 29th. But it is page 18 of that presentation, so I know it was included in the agenda during last meeting on November 29th, but I don't know if council has a hard copy in their binder.
I have no information on that. If it's, if that's what I'm using, this is my Bible. Hold on, sorry about that. Uh, and I don't have access. Now I can go as an individual member of council back to a previous meeting and to try to draw out to information. I'll do that somewhere, I guess, if unless that can be forwarded uh through the course of this meeting. Uh, I've been asked then through to the interim director regarding OCIF funding. Um, is um, there's some text in the draft document. Although page 13 of the overview was uh, we should, we're all aware through communications with the minister, well, with the started with the throne speech escalated to the November 4th, I believe it was uh, financial update from the province of Ontario and then announcement from uh uh, Minister Sirma of Infrastructure relative to the doubling of the um OCIF funding for the next five years, starting the year 2022, of which the town in 2021 received around 221,500, actually, to be exact. Um, with no specific changes in the requirement of the program. Are there any uh current um correspondence or expectations from the Ministry of Infrastructure relative to the level of that funding that uh has been committed to be doubled in the province for small and rural municipalities over, over 100,000 for the town of Tilsonburg?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, on the OCIF, that is an item that we have not received, uh, at least to my knowledge, any additional correspondence. Uh, it was my intent to reach out to the ministry to uh to inquire as to their allocations for 2022, and I will hope to have that at the next budget meeting.
Okay, I would encourage that. Thanks very much. I realize it's a difficult to budget against something that you've yet to receive, but uh it appears in reading and rereading and communications from the ministry that it's more, any amendments are more to the demonstration of how you've used the funds and not on the um competitive nature potentially of of getting the funds. So um, I believe there's a potential for an additional $200,000 plus to be available in provincial resources. How do, how to incorporate that into a budget um is something your response uh from the ministry may assist in. I guess I would ask again relative to various departments, primarily uh to operational departments. Um, where we stand on the request for council for pre-budget approval primarily on um capital construction uh projects. And I would speak directly to connecting Lake Beach Boulevard, retaining Wall, Lindsay Street, Francis Street, and the 2022 asphalt program.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the uh, council's December 13th regular council meeting agenda, there is a report that uh brings forth a number of projects for pre-budget approval.
Thank you. Um, it's, it's here is information, but I would look for confirmation. I believe it's called cap- town snapshot from the policy shop. Um, it formed part of the section one or section two is rather comprehensive. Really don't know what to call it. Comparitors. Where did this come from? Uh, how was it requested and what did it cost?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, this snapshot, uh, there's two parts. There is the initial snapshot and then there is also a document looking at revenue strategies, uh, and these documents uh for both of them uh were in the range of about $980. Uh, and they were part of a a survey that had gone out to a number of municipalities that the town participated in in 21. And uh, there was this uh analysis that was available uh to be acquired to look at how Tilsonburg compared to similar-sized municipalities in terms of from a financial governance and a budget approach. And so it was intended for council's uh review as to where uh Tilsonburg sort of set in terms of uh other similar-sized municipalities from a comparison perspective. And then the second document in terms of the revenue strategies, one of the items that uh I was tasked with in terms of for next year was looking at uh some policies uh as I had uh gone through my last presentation uh that the uh that the regu- that the normal director would look at uh upon uh her return. Uh, and some of those policies that will be incorporated with the multi-year uh budgeting framework. And it's to take a look at anything else that we could identify from a revenue source other than taxation. So there's a a number of legislative pieces that allow municipalities to uh, I guess, exercise their full authority in some areas, uh, and it's just whether or not the town was fully utilizing all of the available revenues that uh we could uh potentially tap into that we may not otherwise uh be fully uh exercising. And so um, that is, again, for discussions, uh, we can have, uh, the intent was to have uh further discussion amongst uh the the leadership team initially to look at ways on how we could, again, maximize revenues in in different areas uh to offset anything that would go to taxation. Uh, and it's for information purposes at this stage with the intent of having part of those deliberations and discussions of primarily for next year's budget development. However, if there's any items in here that are of interest, uh, we can definitely uh take a look at those uh to see if any can be implemented uh to offset anything within this year's budget.
Okay, so where is that in the 22, like, first of all, if there was a nominal opportunity to respond to a survey and share information, uh, find that, we're fine, we get into operations, that's uh um getting information. Um, I have seen or have heard no direction council that any of that information has been received and and requested to be moved on. I've got a a number of summary comments regarding some of the information contained therein and the authors of the report and the comparators that have been used. I don't plan on introducing those today because there's no direction at this point that we're moving in a direction relative to, you know, utilizing this information uh in any of our decision-making processes for 2022. But where in your 2020, 20, excuse me, where in the departmental 2022 to business objectives is the um, I think uh the intent to further um as you've just referenced?
So under tab four page three.
Last item?
Page three and four. Correct. So some of the foundational work on the 23 goals, which are then identified in page six. Some of the financial sustainability plan uh slash long-range financial plan, and a number of policy areas that make up that sustainability plan would be looking at revenue sources, additional revenue sources and policies uh that would help further the town's position in terms of sustainability, therefore, uh, so and I normally, again, in terms of the budget, it's the expenditures less other revenue sources, which equals the taxation piece. So if there's any other areas of revenue sources that we can tap into, that reduces the reliance on the taxation. Uh, so i- in a way to look at any additional revenue potentials, then it would fall within that financial sustainability plan that's part of the strategic plan.
Okay, I've just uh, I've got a couple of quick hits from various departments. Um, and part of this, I apologize, is because I was computer, the last meeting was, it was kicking off. I'm going to go one question for maybe one question, one comment for the C A O under the uh C A O's tab three. Oh, initiative that was 60K, where is that? Oh, this, um, the strategic, there are no financials relative to the C A O. I I shouldn't assume anything, but is that because while in the C A O's business plan and responsibilities, they actually are captured in other parallel uh departmental budgets?
Uh, through the mayor, so I believe you're looking at page two of the Office of the C E O 2022 Business Plan, and that is affordable housing. Um, and it's noted as a project cost, uh, strategic plan initiatives. And that goes down to the page three And that goes down to the page three at the final row. Carry out strategic plan initiatives. So there's there's an alignment between the horrible and attainable housing and the boundary adjustment. So they're grouped together in that 60,000.
Oh, support, support the initiative. Mike, and I'm just asking, we don't, there is no operational line or operational ledger for C O, so those funds will be identified in parallel up departmental budgets.
Yeah, let's call on finance to ask them where they put that $60,000, probably corporate services is what I would imagine.
Okay. It's not bad. Like, I'm just looking for clarity.
No, no, I appreciate the question. Definitely want to know where it is in the budget, so we're all informed. Shane Renato, can you guys comment? Is it impacting corporate services then? Through the mayor, Shane?
Yes, to answer your question, Mister Mayor, a lot of the strategic plans that have arrived are in council's department as one-time items. The other C O operating expenditures are located under corporate services.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And I just asked through to the C O that under the responsibilities and the leadership regarding the community strategic plan, one of the things that has not necessarily been acutely identified that has been discussed is the opportunity through the course of the per year of a community outreach, open house, public meeting, whatever that's called, is would that at least in some text or terms, excuse me, be included in the philosophy of the management of the CSP?
Yeah, through the mayor, absolutely, and that would encompass that $60,000 as well. Ideally, it would just be our own community center. We would house that or whatnot. So there shouldn't be any costs, rental fees, staff time. Typically, it'd be senior managers there as well as council. So we don't expect any budget line items there. But if we were to provide any treats or coffee, depending on how COVID-19 is impacting our ability to do that, that would come under that line. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Intrum Director, just really quickly, it may involve some assistance from the Director of Operations. Going back to the OCIF again, I'm going back to 2021 where we did receive $221,000. Are we aware of, has that money been spent? And where was it spent? And if not, where is the projected unspent resources going here? Because I understand the program does provide for a carry forward of up to five years for to utilize against larger projects.
Mister Mayor, would refer to Shane, who would be more familiar in terms of the application of that funding in the 21 capital budget.
Through you, Mister Mayor, the 2021 OCIF formula funding and the 2021 budget has been allocated to capital project, which one is it here? The Rolling Meadows Phase Two, I believe it was. I'd have to get the exact number, but it was in in and around, I think, 170,000, and then we have $50,000 allocated in the operating budget of engineering to help offset the G I S services that the town pays for to help implement our asset management plan for those services. So that's where roughly the 220K is allocated in the 2021 budget.
That's excellent. Thank you very much. Demonstrates that they've been utilized effectively. Through, I guess, over to Director of Operations again, I've moved that through there. I've had some questions in corporate services, but they're more minor, and I can't read my salt storage. I guess I'm going to go back to a resolution. Let's not start with salt storage. Let's start with facility. The business plan on page four. Page 11, I apologize, council and members. Fleet facility expansion design. Where did that? I realize there was a report. I realized that the architect or the capacity consultant and design had brought forward a report. I also know that there was a resolution of council to bring forward the salt storage portion of that comprehensive report for consideration. So I guess I'm looking for where the why the flight fleet facility expansion design is in the 2022 budget.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. That project is identified in the Development Charges Background Study. That's why staff is following direction. My understanding is that development charge was also passed or approved by council, and we just follow in direction from that study as well.
I'm sorry, I need a little clarity on, it's one thing. Okay, just for clarity, I didn't understand the the aspect of the I understand development charges. I understand that development charges when the regular five-year reviews are done and the identification and the amendments were made to the D C A Act. But what is having the capacity to spend the resource from your development charges? How does that correlate with introducing at a specific point in time the proposed project?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So the development charges study have a section that includes all the projects that are funded through the development charges and also the timing for those projects. The timing for the fleet expansion, this project is also funded 100% from development charges. My understanding, the timing is 2023. So in order to be prepared for that construction, we want to include the design in 2022, just making sure that we will have the project ready for 2023.
Okay, and without me flipping, where's the the design funding coming from? Was that in the subsequent report?
Yes, Mister Mayor, will be in the binder, a part of the project descriptions. So if I go top number six and then set to page. So top number six and then page 51.
Well, there are $27,800 in reserve, or from taxation. And this is just the design?
Yes, so the project is identified as 100% funded by D C's. However, because of disempion on industrial lands, that portion needs to be recovered by taxation. And I will ask maybe Director of Finance or Shane to provide more clarification on this.
No, it's in the justification is in there. So, okay, you've answered my questions. There'll be potentially further deliberation on that. That's more of a heads up. Recognizing that the reference to option A in a recent council resolution was to give direction to bring forward the salt storage facility in a unique and individualized capacity. So that's relative to that salt storage and recognizing that are there any additional operational options, size? And would the proposed post-engineered facility be flexible so that it can be moved at some future point in time?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Yes, so we are considering a few options for this for this facility. First, we are counting also the potential growth that the town is seeing, so making sure that we have the additional storage for for salt. In terms of building it and moving it to a different place. So one of the options that we have seen and the potential option for this will be a precast structure. That can be can be the commission and move to a different side site is required if required.
Okay, thank you. And the Beach Stony Creek retaining wall, which is an almost $1.2 million project, it's on page nine, your capital summary. I'm familiar with it and familiar because of neighbors' concerns and actually persistent, the neighbors' concerns probably facilitated what was a responsible follow-up from our operational engineering department. So I recognize the the, you know, physical location and the potential deterioration of this and the priority for the health and safety of the pedestrian and vehicular traffic in the area. How does how does a retaining wall get to this where it becomes an emergence kind of response within a 12-month timeframe?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and actually, this was one of the projects that was included in the 2021 budget, but then we decided to postpone it to 2022. But now, because it's been already a year, we've seen that actually the slope is moving. And there is a potential that we can lose a section of the road and also the sidewalk that is next to the road. If that happens, that means that we need to close the road and potential extra cost to to fix the same issue. That's why we, because it's been identified and we know that it's happening, that the slope is not stable. We have consulted with an engineering firm, and they have provided with this with this option, which is a replacement of the retaining wall, we are more stable, that will prevent that section of road from failing.
Hey, I'm sorry, I have members counsel, I just the sidewalks indicated as doing Van Street, this is part of the ongoing annualized funding for the sidewalk connectivity program indicated in 2022 as being Van Street and Trachee Drive. Are there others supplemental capital or renovation work being done in those two areas of the community?
Thanks, Mister Mayor. And no for 2022. My understanding is that we only be building the sidewalk on those roads.
Okay, I just, not for now, but when additional deliberation is provided for, I'm going to look for the opportunity that when we're doing, we're doing, you know, if an identified area needs to have a sidewalk or it's identified in that policy, that we try as best as possible to accommodate when other work is being done in the area. And I think our community as a whole, although this recent investment of fiber will bring greater connectivity and greater opportunity for business and homeowners has already been extremely disruptive to various sections of the community. And I would be looking at, you know, it might be a a year for a break, and you know, when Van Street needs to be done, like construction, you do the sidewalks, you know, so but that's as an example. The bus stop, I think, is been identified, I guess, through to that was operations or R C P, but we're confirming maybe interim director is that this application, the funding in there from taxation of 68K is directly based on the receipt of a grant application. Am I correct?
That is my understanding, yes.
So not respect or with full respect for the value of a stop, that can be for future deliberation. I'd be concerned that we're utilizing a tax revenue for an unsubstantiated grant application in partnership because of the potential for creep there, but that's a philosophy I've held for quite some time. I am going to be getting tax stabilization reserve updated account. Appreciate that. Oh, so through to the fire chief, the training indicates a training decrease. A rationale for training decreases, just, you know, draw it to my attention and any areas in the you know, I'm personally a great focus on training and education. And then I would suggest particularly in the emergency and fire rescue. So rationale for a decrease in training.
Through you, Mister Mayor. Yeah, there there was some decreases in there. One was capacity issues. Again, it was identified in our plan, so our capacity to actually deliver the training. The other thought there is if we go ahead with the Assistant Chief slash Prevention and Training, some of that stuff will be coming in-house. So a lot of the training is aligning with the Ontario Fire Marshal and N F P A standard. So that's where you you see that variance.
Okay, would that be similar then to experiences that are potentially available, at least in the short term regarding the Fire Master Plan? To at least have the opportunity to review the existing plan?
Through you, Mister Mayor. Yes, I have reviewed that plan already, but yes, absolutely, we would consider both.
Okay, I just, I'm not to move on deliberations, but I'm concerned about the timing maybe of that. Economic development consultations, there is Mister, I'm not going, I'm just making a comment. I made it about education and training and our attraction of service land and work, and I think if we're going to invest anywhere, it needs to continue to be in economic development. And if the department requires additional resources, we should be looking at that to support where they ultimately gain benefit right across the entire community. R C P, thanks again, Mister Baird. Oh, okay, and thanks, Councilor Parker, because I did have the question regarding the lion's den. So I think it was indicated that it is indeed in there, and it does come from reserves. So thank you very much for that. And I would ask about this line item, general building repairs and maintenance. It's budgeted 2022 at 80K from taxation. Do we know where the funds in 2021 of a similar line item were spent? How much of that was spent?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mister Mayor. It's basically a placeholder for any type of maintenance that we would do in any of the town buildings. So as an example, painting, we would have our staff go out and buy a few gallons of paint, do a room. It could include lighting retrofits, so replacing ballasts, ceiling tiles, carpet repairs, carpet replacement, just all the general things that I found since my tenure in the in the role. We didn't have an account available to do some of the general We didn't have an account uh available to do some of the general basic maintenance uh for all the different buildings. So that's where the funds have been expended. And it's now part of the base budget and it's for work that is known and uh or or we fall upon if it's a, you know, repairs and things of that nature. Uh, hopefully that answers your question, sir.
Okay, but I appreciate that. What I was, I can find the 2021. Budget, that line item, but I'm more interested in how much of that budget line in 2021 did we spend?
Um, we're on track to basically expend the full amount. Uh, so anything that had to be done of an emergency type nature has been completed. And then uh even though a lot of our facilities were not actively used, other than the the administration offices, of course. It allowed our staff to go out and make repairs. Uh, just again, general up upkeep, keeping people busy, looking after our assets. Uh, within that, within that budget, we're able to, as we get close to the end of the year, not over expend that, but work with the the amount that we've been budgeting.
And I'm going to uh think that was it. I got actually triggered a question. Uh, RCP, oh, uh, facilities and facilities maintenance from a cleaning perspective. As an example, the corporate offices, how often per week or per weekday, but per week? Are uh services uh being provided in the corporate service office? I use that as an example.
Sure, that's a great question. Um, and we we've sort of a adopted because of the uh the pandemic, you know, and not a lot of people in the office. Routinely, we are adapting a hybrid model, but uh to answer your question on the corporate side, we would have uh a janitorial services. These are contracted. They are not town staff. Uh, they would come in three or four times a week. Um, and that includes sort of the deep sanitization that we've made our standard and now to keep everyone safe. Uh, so that example there, for comparison, of course, with the community center, we have, you know, we're a seven day uh a week operation. From 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So there's a lot more uh activity there and a lot more uh a higher degree of cleaning, change rooms, showers, that sort of thing.
No, that's excellent. I I just uh have uh. Living that experience, certainly there's two different. There's a COVID and I think you've just referenced it as um deep sanitization. And of course, the complex, what we knew, if we knew then what we know now, the amount of glass that's in the facility and the amount of cleaning that it takes to clean glass, but. Um, I would also suggest that uh I've come into my, you know, particular area of work. And uh really haven't touched things or moved many things and that, you know, uh, things have been cleaned and 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 beyond the sanitization. So I've just. Recognize that the COVID de-sanitization is one thing, uh, the kind of the uh extreme. Daily cleaning is uh something that could be a little more consistent with way we live our daily life. Anyways, thanks for your patient counsel. I think those are, I I have a lot of supplemental things and I'm sure it will. Will come up as are available to all other council members. Um, are there any other uh general questions at this point in time and then we'll go around a couple or another time here and then. Perhaps take a break and then come back for for deliberations. We're gonna start with Councillor Parker, please.
Thanks, uh, Mr. Mayor. Through you to uh Director Reyes. Uh, it actually goes back to the conversation about the bus stops. The funding in there for taxation, if the grant is not received, um, do you plan on going forward with building bus stops? Uh, if so, how many? If the grant funding is not received, um, are we, um, yeah, are we going to go through with it?
Thank you, Councillor. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, that's one, one of the uh tournaments that we have. If the grant application is not successful, is to use that the money that is budgeted from and to build approximately. Five to six bus stops uh within our bus network. Um, obviously, we would use the the bus stop that are more most used by the by residents, but that would be the intent to use that money to do to build a bus stop within our network.
Thank you.
Councillor Esseltine, please.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at then section two in our budget binder and pages four through. Six. And so these pages offer us options to reduce the overall budget. Um, there's option two, option three and option four. And I wondered if um if we could have a walkthrough, sort of a description of what um these things that were would could leave the budget or that we could take out. How that would impact everything. So I wondered if if perhaps some Mr. Pugio or um Shane could. Walk us through this and just tell us what we're pulling out, like for instance, it says. We could reduce for council 158,200 dollars, one time items funded from tax rate stabilization reserve. Anyway, I wondered if we could have a description of what these items are that could leave the budget or that finances determine are possible things that we could pull out of the budget. Is this a good time to do that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yes, we can. And Shane is available to walk council through each option and and go through those in detail if council so wishes.
Well, I think actually it speaks directly to the resolution that's on the floor. I believe, if I look back at the resolution that's on the floor, it references one of these options. So I think it's appropriate question. And um just ask uh Mr. Sarah Finch to uh proceed through this and uh. Actually, after get through each option and then an opportunity for questions for clarification and then move on to the next option.
Thank you.
Right through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Esseltine and the rest of council. Uh, I'm just going to share my screen here to hopefully make things a little easier to follow. Let's see. Hopefully you can see uh my screen now. It it's a summary of the the capital draft listing of new projects for 2022. Hopefully. Everyone can see that. So the resolution that's, uh, I'll go through each option, um, as indicated in tab two, but the resolution um. In the agenda is to, uh, I guess to approve, maybe not approve, but to select option three. So how the options have been um kind of decided is basically, I'm going to start with the capital piece first. So under the draft capital listing, um, what's in the binder is the 2.9 million dollar increase. Options uh two, three and four kind of uh juggle that number and option two. Uh, which would be, um, so before we get into the options, I just want to kind of go over the the priority of the project values. Uh, staff have um kind of. Recommended and ranked uh the projects that make up that 2.9 million dollar value. Uh, there's a kind of a color code. Uh, blue being must do this year, which is 2022. Gray, which is beam, which is must do next year, which means 2023. And then the green one here must do, you know. Uh, after 2023, uh, three years out. So option two. Basically, uh, is, if you can still see my screen, all the must do projects for this year. And the must do projects for next year. So basically, the green. Or no, sorry, the blue and the gray colored projects. Now, the summary of all these projects is in tab 10. Uh, under page, uh, I think one, two and three, to get the details, but. For the remaining, so for option two, the capital piece, uh, it's uh reducing the capital amount just by removing uh projects that are identified as C. Um, now to get to the rest of the reductions, uh, you'll see here, um, there's a lot of one time items uh in the operating budgets through. Lot of the departments, um, and a lot of these one time items are uh arrived through the strap plan. That was approved by council. So they're in there as one time items, but uh right now the funding source is taxation. So to help alleviate uh the reduction uh to the budget increase. Uh, staff is recommending um these one time items to be funded from the tax rate stabilization reserves. So that's kind of uh um what's in the council. A lot of the strap plan uh one time items are in under listed under council, so we can. If we want, uh, like, we can bring that up, uh, and you, we can see some of those items. Or or before we go into that, there's uh financial services with the one time item. Uh, what else do we have in here as one time items? There's one under public works, uh, economic development. Um, so a lot of the one time items um that are in the 2022 operating budget. Are coming or resulting from uh the strap plan. So staff is recommending, um, we fund those items. From the tax rate stabilization reserve. So I'm gonna just quickly summarize options three and four before we kind of get into the details, because a lot of the options three and four are similar. Options, so you can see the total savings for the operating budget uh for option two would be 376,500. Plus, and that's a lot of just adding uh reserves to fund one time items. And then as well, there's 91,000 uh in reduction of uh costs consolidated throughout all departments. Um, and we're reducing supplies, building, maintenance, repairs, full time overtime and materials and inventory to the levels approved in the 2021 budget. So option three is identical to option two in the option in the operating budget. So you'll see no changes there. The change uh in option three for capital is the must do items um for this year. So uh it is the option A. Which is the value of the 2.72 million dollars. But what's different um for option, oh, sorry. Option three is. Project X 88, which is a fleet uh unit, uh, rather than being funded from taxation, uh, it's recommended that we fund it from the fleet reserve. So that it also reduces um the taxation component uh in the 2022 budget from. 2.9 million down to 2.4 million. So that's for the reduction. So that's option three. And option three is the one identified uh in the agenda today. And then quickly, option four. Uh, the, we'll start with capital. It is uh recommending that the the ca- the capital base or the capital budget be the same level of funding as in 2021 approved. Which is just shy of 2.1 million. And then there's some further operation uh decreases, uh mainly being in fleet services where. Contributions to reserve uh will be uh reduced to zero and um that is practically um. Most of the changes that are uh derived in option four. Now, if you'd like, uh, I know there's a lot of one time items scattered throughout uh the operating budget. We can, I can kind of illustrate which ones. Um, are in the budget if uh if you'd like at this point. Before I go any further, I just through you, Mr. Mayor, uh, to council, if you want me to identify some of those strategic items and the values.
Not they were here, where you can continue if you like. I think it's good that you've shown two, three and four, and I think the resolution, if I'm not mistaken. Option three is the resolution just for council's consideration that currently exists on the floor. That's just now for discussion and deliberations. Do you have any follow up, Councillor Esseltine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would be interested in some of the details of that, like the one time items that would be taken out. I I know you're saying they relate to the strategic plan, but. Could you give us examples of what they, what these things are or could be?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Esseltine and rest of council. Um, so of the one time items in the budget. Uh, I'll start with council. Uh, do have a funding source through the modernization intake three uh program, but uh they're not 100% funded. Um, so if you can see my screen here, this is just a screenshot or or uh through our um. Our budgeting software, sorry. Uh, so some of the ones listed in council um as one time items. You can kind of see here, uh, we have employee engagement survey, we have navigation improvements on the municipal website. Uh, mobile application, uh, hopefully this font, um, you can read. I can't really make my screen any bigger. Um, what else do we have here?
Actually, if you could read it, because I I if you could say it out loud, because I'm finding I can't read it on that.
Okay, yeah.
So if you could say it, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, so there's a youth engagement program for a thousand dollars. There is employee engagement survey for $10,000. There's navigation improvements on the municipal website for 85,800. There's the mobile, mobile application, uh, 37,500, uh, strategic plan for 60. What else? Municipal management interim, uh, 75,000 and then creation of automated workflows uh for 51,000. Now, all those one time items uh add up to 320,300. But like I mentioned earlier, there is 162,100. In the budget that is um funding um these one time items through the modernization strat three application. So that hasn't been um awarded yet or approved or announced. I'm not sure. Um, so the difference being 158,200. Which, if we go back into the options, is the amount staff is requesting uh that we fund. From the tax rate stabilization reserve to uh fund these one time items. So those are just the the one time items uh identified in uh under council. We just figured it was a a good holding place. Uh, to capture all of those rather than spreading most of those through um several departments.
If if I could continue. No, go ahead. Sorry.
I was just gonna say, there's a few other one time items in some of the other departments that I can highlight if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
Okay, uh, if we go to.
Just, um, Mr. Pratt has his hand up, but then we'll get back to Shane. But Shane, you're confirming though that while option four remains on your screen, that. Potential recommendation that you've just highlighted is part of option two, option three and option four as an example.
That is correct.
Okay, just didn't want to think that that was unique to option four only. Mr. Pratt, and then we'll go back to Mr. Sheriff Finch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question is to uh Mr. Sheriff Finch. So in the items you just showed us, the one time items, is that the revenue and is there correlating expenses somewhere else in the budget?
Yeah, so um these one time items uh that I just kind of went over, um, it under council, there the value of these projects are 320,000. There's a revenue offset of 162,100, uh, which is the modernization intake three program, which. Um, like I said, hasn't been awarded or announced or however you want to call it. So the difference being uh the 158,200 that is in. Um, the operating budgets right now. And under the options two, three and four, uh, it's recommending that we. Fund though the difference uh from the Monday or, yeah, from the tax rate stabilization reserve. Option one does not include the funding from the reserve. But options two, three and four. But options two, three, and four are accounting for those one-time items to be funded from the tax rate stabilization reserve.
And the reason why, uh through the mayor, I wanted to note that Shane was for council's benefit. Because, for example, the intern, while the total cost of that is seventy-five thousand. That is offsetted by, I believe, sixty-six percent by the province. So it's the the total cost to the. Uh impact on the budget that, you know, should council want to take it out, it's not going to be seventy-five thousand dollars, it's like twenty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, we can further uh through you, Mr. Mayor, uh to uh to the CEO's point, we could further uh. Break down uh the the net cost per each strap plan item uh for council. So if there was certain ones, you know. Um that, you know, aren't uh supported or not, you you could, you would know how much would uh impact the budget. And then, yeah, just quickly moving on on these one-time items, if I may, just to highlight. Um if I just jump into other works here. Now, the ones in uh public works aren't uh from the strap plan, so um but they are a one-time item um. And Director Carlos could perhaps speak more to it, but there's twenty-four thousand dollars in there um. And we are camera for sewer inspections under. Under storm sewers for twenty thousand. And then under safety devices and guardrails, there's a four thousand dollar one-time item um for additional investigation um. And again, options two, three, and four. Um are pulling uh. Monies from the tax rate stabilization reserve to fund these one-time items. And the last one-time item is under economic development, you know, just quickly, and sorry for the jumping around. There is, and again, this is uh coming from, I believe, the strap plan, but there's a forty thousand dollar item uh uh. For implementation stream automated business directory application. So I don't know if this is coming from the strap plan. And Development Commissioner might be able to speak to it, but there is a funding source of twenty-six thousand dollars. Um as an application into the modernization um intake three program for twenty-six thousand. So the net cost uh as a one-time item is fourteen thousand dollars. So we, again, it's being recommended to be funded from the tax rate stabilization reserve to offset that cost. And again, it's uh um. It is here for it. There's two things here. Uh so there's fourteen thousand dollars to be funded from. The tax rate stabilization reserve, and then um there's another item here uh relating to the BIA to make up the difference for four thousand, so. Um those are all the one-time items that are identified in the operating budget um for two thousand and twenty-two. And for all options two, three, and four, they're all uh similar. They're all recommended to be funded from the tax rate stabilization reserve. And the rest of the operational savings for options two, three, and four um. You know, they're the um, you know, for economic development here, for example, it's, you know, reduce the part-time labor. So the description is. Um pretty much uh what we're doing um. And uh, yeah, that is, I'll I'll field any more questions that council has, Mr. Mayor, if there is. I know that was a lot of info.
Council Esseltine, continue, and Deputy Mayor, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm just gonna leave the chair for not more than five minutes.
That's all right.
Um thank you, Mr. Mayor, then um through you to Mr. Sarah Finch. Um so. The funding, the things that are being funded from the tax rate stabilization reserve. Do we have the money in that reserve right now to cover those costs?
Uh through the deputy mayor to Council Esseltine, uh if you can still see my screen here, um it can make a little bigger, hopefully.
That's that's correct.
And this is it, I believe, uh this is in tab two under the options, but yes, um we do have monies in the reserve. Um there's a, we have an estimated balance, as you can see here at the end of two thousand and twenty-one. Of just three hundred and fifty-three thousand, and then we have the recommended amounts here. Uh if approved to come out, uh then an ending balance of sixty-one thousand at the end of two thousand and twenty-two. Um I do also want to make a point, oh, if I may, there uh. There is monies and we'll have to get the the value for that um that council has uh. Approved the use of to fund projects out at the airport. Um yeah, and those resolutions were that. The tax rate stabilization reserve would be replenished uh in the future. Uh based on land sales proceeds out at the airport, so that those uh those transactions haven't occurred to my knowledge as of yet. Uh but we can get that value um to what it roughly should, what we've spent and what should be replenished to council if if you uh so you have that information.
So just regardless then of of whether we get that third phase of modernization funding. We have the money available in the set tax rate stabilization reserve right now that would cover a lot of those things. Is that correct?
Uh through the deputy mayor to Council Esseltine, um so if the funding for intake three uh isn't approved, then. Um. There wouldn't be enough in the tax rate stabilization to cover a hundred percent of the cost.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for that information. That that's useful. Thank you.
That all had to be asked. Thanks, Councilor Esseltine, for that. Anything further from other members of council? The mayor has returned.
Just coffee and water. Uh I think Counselor Gobazy did have a question. I just wanted one thing of clarity, everyone is coming downstairs, is that um. Well, Counselor Esseltine asked the question if there'd be enough. Resource in the tax stabilization reserve to cover the expense. I think I that's the way I heard the question. Uh and the answer was yes um. How was I gonna put this? You would have to cover a hundred percent of that expense, not the the in the original budget. That is just covering the percent not received from intake three of the tax stabilization. So it's a larger variance. Uh Counselor Gobazy, please.
Um I don't have a question. I wanted to amend my motion.
Um resolutions on the floor, then make an amendment, please.
Um I look to the seconder, um if he agrees, but I would like to add in addition. That project X sixty-nine fleet facility expansion be removed from the two thousand twenty-two budget.
Okay, so I'm looking for a resolution that um the for an amended resu- resolution. Or as amendment to the resolution, that project X.
Sixty-nine fleet nine. X sixty-nine fleet fix facility expansion.
Be removed from the budget?
The twenty-twenty-two budget?
The twenty-twenty-two. And seconder?
I was the seconder, Mr. Mayor, but I would like, before I agree with the amendment.
Anyone can second this. This is an amendment to the resolution that's on the floor.
So you don't like, I all I was gonna ask is what what the details were in the amendment? Or do you want me to second it first and then ask for the details?
Yeah, then we'll ask the mover to reference the page and give, and she can speak to it, so.
Then I'll second it after that.
Moved by Counselor Gobazy, seconded by Deputy Mayor, resolve the project X sixty-nine. Fleet facilities expansion be removed from the two thousand twenty-two budget. Now, just before, I just want to make sure that I'm doing like the new very consistent counselor. I want to make sure I'm dealing with this appropriately. Because I don't want there to be surprising expectations, and that's why we're here. So Madam Clerk. My intention is that this resolution is an appropriate amendment. Or is this a sep- or should this be? A separate resolution. I just want this to get the due respect. And not be logged down, but I also want to respect the procedural bylaw. I know how it, I would. Encourage that it's done, but um. We're dealing with the draft budget, not a final budget, so I'm just looking for your guidance and and that's to benefit the mover.
So um council has a a couple of different options, right? So if um the intent is to make a further. Um change from what's contemplated, and I see Shane's hand up, so I might just. Defer to him just in case he has a a question. I just could, uh, so my it's my understanding that the intent is to further amend the motion. Or further amend the um the main motion to reduce this particular capital item, which I'm assuming is not part of option three.
Okay, I just want to, my intent or my expectation is that. The resolution on the floor, like that, no, there's a resolution now on the floor, but it's an amended resolution to the resol- the main resolution. So we're gonna decide whether or not this resolution gets added into. The main resolution. The staff, the original one is it staff repair in place on the next meeting. Uh any options that identify projects that can be eliminated, et cetera, et cetera. But if this resolution, the amendment. That would, in essence, take. X sixty-nine out of the draft business plan and budget. Madam Clerk.
Yes, that that's correct. Oh Shane, Shane has have his hand up, so I'm just wondering, do you have any additional information for Shane?
Uh yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to um council um. Option three, which is uh included in the 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 agenda. X sixty-nine is not included um a- as part of option three, so it's already been removed. Uh as per options two, three, and and four. Options three is only capturing the. Category A projects, so uh X sixty-nine is a B must-do next year, um even though it's the design, so. Um it's not included in currently in option three, if that helps clarify uh the resolution.
Apologize to all of council, um especially the mover, um but that's. Not necessarily what the original resolution speaks to. Um so I got to just open the floor to Counselor Gobazy, please.
Okay, so I will remove the amendment if it's not in option three, and then if I need to bring it back at the next meeting, well, um. I'm gonna have to, I, okay, so I would just like to make a comment overall. Would it be possible to send the list out to council? On what's included in each option? Um because it's confusing, I guess, maybe the way that it's ranked and how the options are laid out.
Can I ask you a question, Counselor Gobazy, relative to the motion that you brought in front and had duly seconded? Is, and I don't mean to be, you know, don't don't remove your thing yet, and I cut out again um. To our IT team um. Um. Can be eliminated or cost savings that can be realized to bring the budget in line with option three. Are you more asking, in your interpretation of what that resolution means, irrespective of what the. Recommendations in auction option three is, is your quote-unquote. Bring the budget in line with option three means. Option three in terms of the financial requirement from taxation and budget and impact on taxation. So I I want to make that, if that's the interpretation of that, and that's what I thought that means with respect, is that. There was a certain redundancy to that relative to, not to the the expectation on the finance. On on the fact that we have an option three that's already highlighted how to get there. But there may be other things that council wishes to deliberate on, and I was hoping some of that conversation today. On that quality resolution would say, well, maybe some of those things that were eliminated, utilize it. I I don't mean to prejudice it, so. Um you can either, Counselor, you have the floor, and that amendment can either be ratified, I would suggest. Or you can recognize that it's already been removed by staff in option three.
All right, thank you. So um yes, the intent is correct, is the financial. Um the financial aspect of option three, that's what the resolution speaks speaks to. So what may. So moving forward, um there may be projects that have not been identified in option three. That council may choose to remove moving forward. Um I would suggest um then to amend the motion. To just say. Sorry, I'm sorry, it's here. To amend the motion to read, sorry, I'm reading here um.
Just real- while you're thinking, and I'm interrupting. You're preparing to amend, which which resolution are you preparing to amend?
The original resolution.
Can you then withdraw your amended resolution?
Okay, I don't think it got seconded, but I'll withdraw it. I'll withdraw the amended resolution. So now we're back at the original resolution, and I'll amend it. To bring the budget in line with option three, um which should include. The elimination of F sixty-nine fleet facility expansion design.
Deputy Mayor, I need need your confirmation so that it's a resolution that the original mover and seconder are confirmed.
I will second that motion for now, yes. To get it on the floor.
Okay, so all we're we're doing is. We're going back to the fact that where there's an understanding, I believe, that's up to council's interpretation, the consensus on. The original resolution is speaking that by the sixteenth, there's a a report back to council that. Uh further identifies the satisfaction with satisfaction. The targets as included in option three, some of which may or may not include any or all. Of the recommendations that are in the left-hand column regarding potential savings. And that the addition is moved and properly seconded would uh ratify the elimination of X sixty-nine. Um uh fleet expansion design as one of those um. Uh one of those options, and Counselor Gobazy.
So just to speak to the amendment, um I'm going to go back to the resolution where staff. Or where council directed staff to bring salt storage forward. Um I just feel that this. We had a lengthy discussion regarding the fleet facility expansion. Um there was. I know I had spoken about it being one piece of the pie, and we're looking at. The fire hall, we're looking at the town hall, and that this is not the right time to move forward with any fleet expansion, so just wanted to make that clear. On why I'm adding that. And then going back to the motion, um there were a bunch of items. That um I had identified at the beginning being the operating budget, capital budget. Rec programming, waste management, and the engineering department. So um the motion. Is not saying that staff needs to come back with items they've already identified. I believe there's other areas that they need to look at as well. And the goal is to get the uh financial aspect of the budget down that's palatable to the ratepayers.
Hey, anything further? This um we're not, um the omnibus as now amended resolution remains on the floor. There's no uh. Um we can uh speak to that directly. We can continue to ask questions. Um or we can basically have given direction, uh open the floor for additional comments and. Uh move towards a a shorter meeting, so. Uh Deputy, please.
I'm taking this from a a very uh um overall. I'm taking this from a, a very, uh, um, overall point of view. If I were staff and I had cha- the challenge of this resolution, I think I would want to target. Rather than to just say identify projects that could be eliminated. Uh, if we're looking at a, a reduction, uh, percentage-wise, I believe that would have to be done. Rather than to just say save money where we can. Is there any particular amount that, I know I have in mind what I would like to see in a reduction, but. Uh, it's not my resolution, I, I'm feeling that it would make it a lot. Simpler and clearer for our staff if they had a target, uh, that council wanted to see.
Well, I'd anticipate that the fact that there's a resolution on the floor. That was crafted, seconded, and we've had discussion, but no, uh, confirmation on. As contained in section two of our binders, is that option three. Shows a net one point nine four percent tax rate change. Is that correct, Mr. Um, Pulea?
Yes, that is, and I, I was going to raise that as well, as if, if the, if that is the intent of the resolution. Um, to bring it in at the one point nine four tax rate change. Then the details, we can work within option three. Uh, as identified, uh, which. Uh, does kind of spell out the projects identified in the capital. Uh, top ten capital summary is all the ones in blue. Uh, those are, uh, what's in the priority items A. And also that unit eighty, that loader would change from tax station to being funded from fleet reserve. So that's what would get the capital down to the two point four seven million. That does away with the X sixty-nine already in option three, so we would deal with that aspect of the resolution. And the, in the operating side, the one-time items as were, uh, discussed. From the tax rate stabilization reserves, plus the additional operating savings identified of ninety-one thousand five hundred. Would be reduced across the board in supplies, building repairs and maintenance, overtime, materials, inventory. To bring those to the twenty twenty-one amounts. If we did all of those, then that would bring it to that tax rate. And that would satisfy the elimination of the X sixty-nine, which is already part of option three.
Just in, in clarification of that, so yes, that's, uh, our original options where if walking right in and putting our hands up. Um, in essence, today. On the preliminary draft business plan and budget would have seen, was it seven point four three percent increase?
Yes.
Okay, then option two, there was a variance down to four point seven four. Option three, which is the resolution on the floor, which has additionally identified one specific task, but that task has been. Already removed, so that's kind of a net zero, uh, relative to number one, although. Um, appropriately confirms that that's out, you can't play around and bring it back or, um. Uh, amend that if this is adopted the way it is. Uh, and that brings it down to one point nine four, and there's other additional opportunities, uh, for further reductions that would actually see a net decrease. Just confirming, we all have that information, and that was your. Four options that you've laid out before council and the community, and that Mr. Sarah Finchon has, uh. Uh, effectively provided us an update on again today.
That is correct, yes.
That's correct, yeah, okay. Any further questions or comments? The what, councillor Esseltine, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so just looking then at that option three, like it does. Remove a number of things that Shane spoke to earlier that are part of, uh, the strategic plan moving forward and things like that now. With those items could still be funded by the third phase of a modernization fund. But if they're not picked up that way, would we lose them unless we put forward alternate choices?
So, what's in the budget? You, Mr. Mayor, what's in the budget is the municipal portion of those projects. So if the funding does not come through, and we're saying to fund those from the tax rate stabilization reserve. Normally, the money just does not come out of the reserve, the project does not go ahead unless. That respective department head would then bring a report forward to council. Asking if they wanted to go ahead with the full project, then council would have to fund the entire. Uh, expense of that project, which the tax rate stabilization reserve does not have enough funding. For all of the gross expenditures of those projects, it only has enough for the municipal portions. So by default, if a project is not approved, the project would not go ahead. And the money does not get pulled out of the reserve.
Okay, so during our discussions here, then our budget discussion. If we find something else, if we, you know, go basically with option three. But we find something else in the operating budget that we can remove. That could then leave dollars for some of the strategic plan stuff, we can continue to do that during our budget discussions, is that correct?
Uh, yes, it, it, it is council's prerogative to make any changes to the budget, uh, at any time, up until we get the final budget approval. And then even thereafter, it will be a budget amendment thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Madam Clerk, do you have a handle on the full text of the resolution as it's now on the floor?
Well, currently, we have the amendment on the floor, and that is to eliminate, um.
You have the full text, that's all I'm.
Yep, I do.
Okay, then, like, before we get to a, a roll call raising of the hands, I'm going to ask you to read it for us, because that's all. That's good, anything further? I think this is general, the concept was that it's, um. The original resolution and the additional information regarding the firm removal of project X sixty-nine. The, the project regarding the fleet expansion, um, anything further to the resolution? Couple of things, and I'm going to ask clerk to, uh, read that resolution. Um, I'm going to encourage, as I've historically done, I'm a little concerned about the immediate reduction. To get to option three by the utilization of tax stabilization reserves. Um, I know the opportunity and we've used it in the past, and it was unique last year relative to. Um, the basically ongoing concerns and situations regarding, uh. Um, affordability in the community, which is not unique to Tilsenberg. Uh, but I think we were creative in finding ways to ensure more money stayed in the pockets of our residents. But, um, we don't know yet our year-end, uh, serve plus or deficit, there may be opportunity to. You know, ensure that if we can use more, or if we do choose to use more, because option three is using. More and depleting that resource, which is your rainy day resource. Um, which needs further deliberation. Although as I say that, I'm going to be cautionary to all of council and leadership to suggest that. I do not believe it's appropriate to be utilizing taxation revenues. On, uh, an item like the bus shelter, when it's not guaranteed funding. Um, or some of the other aspects where, um, third-party applications, uh, even in the, uh, intake three modernization funding. You know, it's one thing to know that you have the cash in your hand from a partner. And you can budget for it and use your entire toolbox to find whether it's, uh, taxation, user feed. Uh, debt or debenture, um, because you know that you're doing that. But to accelerate the requirement from taxation for a program that requires third-party funding. And if that third-party funding doesn't come through, what we've ultimately done is increased. The pressure on a tax base and not potentially provided the service, and then twenty twenty-three comes in twenty-four, and all you've done. Not you, excuse me, the collective decisions have been to escalate that variance on taxation with actually out to live, without delivering. The project that it was originally intended to do, so the, back to councillor Esseltine's points. And then I believe the secondary response from the interim director of finance were that. Uh, yes, they could be, but I don't know if all the funds are available in tax stabilization. To provide for those things, uh, that are currently in the, um. Uh, tax stabilization. Um, when it got moved into, to number three. The reference to the, uh, Terra Community Infrastructure Fund, the OCIF funding, uh, that's very important, there's, you know, uh. Quarter of a million dollars potentially net gain relative to that, that needs to be identified. Because those are usable resources that can, uh, uh, bring value to the, to the community as a whole. And projects that we've already identified, um, I would, uh, recognize that we're moving into our one hundred and fiftieth year and. Um, have we got even the, in, introduce, introduce the equitable resources to ensure that, uh. You know, we have the capacity to, you know, do some of those things or utilize, uh, uh, some of the trusts and reserves. Um, I don't know what we've done as a community to, and maybe that was the one question I forgot to ask earlier. But, uh, is, uh, Ministry of Tourism, cul- cul- culture is, uh, have we made, are we making applications? To ensure that, uh, um, our celebrations in, in, uh, twenty twenty-two regarding Tilsenberg one fifty. Uh, are receiving commensurate support, uh, from the province and the feds relative to programs. That are specifically designed for that type of celebration. To councils benefit and to leadership that's aware of this is that currently as it exists in the Oxford County budget. Um, because the grant programs for this year, for some unknown reason. Grants usually were put in or at least interjected into the draft business plan for their twenty. For their previous year's amount, this year, um, finance department, um. Left them all out and they need to be included, and currently the only resolution that does, that will change. Based on an authorship of a resolution, but I want to, you know, understand that as this very moment. Um, the, um, budgeted amount of grant from the county of fifty thousand dollars is not in the county budget. So there's a potential variance of fifty thousand dollars there. Um, there's a project at the water and wastewater treatment facility that's awaiting response from municipal staff on the. Uh, applicability for that to be included in the county budget, so we'll, um, we talked about briefly, I think at a previous meeting regarding that. So those are comments to support the resolution, I'm very much looking forward to the sixteenth, I believe the thirteenth, we're actually having. Um, the, uh, opportunity to review and analyze the, uh, pre-budget approval, um.
Looks like we've completely lost the mayor. He's on mute if you're back, there.
Okay, it's the same, same issue that's been, uh, this, um. Okay, I'm gonna be real quick, and the other thing is, I would encourage, based on the community strategic plan. And it doesn't impact the, uh, immediate financing of this budget, but it again speaks to the flexibility and the availability of resources. Um, through the course of the year, when we're talking about, uh, enhanced, uh, primary, uh, medical facilities. And ensuring that, uh, those options that have been discussed, physician recruitment, retention and partnerships with others in the community, whether it's long-term care. Whether it's affordable and attainable housing, that there are projects, because of trigger mechanisms and availability of assets and things that may come. To our attention very quickly, um, and we need, I believe, to at least have the flexibility and resources financially. To take advantage of those, um, so not only am I supporting the resolution, but I would encourage that. There's been a lot of very positive dialogue and discussion here today, uh, senior leadership will have, uh, some real material to, to review. But I also think that shouldn't be limited to, uh, and I would encourage it not be limited to, um, the, uh, left-hand columns. Uh, there are other things, uh, that can be, uh, looked on to, uh. That some of council has, uh, introduced today, so, uh, madam clerk, could you just, uh, ensure that we're all, um, reviewing and, and listening to the same, uh. Resolution, please?
Right, so the, the resolution is on the floor. It's moved by council of Gobaisi, seconded by deputy mayor Barris. That the notice of motion be amended to include the elimination of item number sixty-nine. And then once that gets voted on, then the main motion can be, uh, considered.
Well, okay. I'm satisfied with that, that's not a council, council of Gobaisi, because she utilized her original mover. Um, removed the sixty-nine, X sixty-nine project and added on to her original resolution. Are we convinced that these will do the same thing?
It, it can, so you want to go back to the original motion then?
Councillor Gobaisi's removed her original amendment, amended resolution, amending resolution. And then I believe that the resolution, and please forgive me, but it was that the staff repair in place on the December sixteenth. Council budget meeting agenda and present to council at said meeting any options that identify projects that can be eliminated. Or cost savings that can be realized to bring the budget in line with option number three and further that item X.
Sixty-nine.
Item, but actually had the text, apologize.
That.
Uh, project X sixty-nine fleet facilities expansion be removed from the twenty twenty-two budget. Does that pass the muster as a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, councillor Gobaisi confirming with you and deputy mayor that that was the, uh, resolution. That, uh, wasn't an amendment to, but amendment of the res- resolution brought to the floor.
Yes.
Okay, any final deliberations on that? Fair to call that question, all those in favor? Post-resolution is carried. Any other items of business to be brought before council at this time? We have an understanding that on the thirteenth, there'll be a report, um, for council's review and benefit regarding. Uh, pre-budget approval. Um, subsequent to that, with council's decision will, uh, potentially assist in. Their deliberations on the sixteenth, of which direction has now been given, and I would encourage, uh, the sixteenth, uh, is, uh. You know, sleeves rolled up and, uh, any finite, uh, direction heading into the new year. Um, a look for a resolution, are there any motions, notice of motions, notice of motions to be brought forward at a subsequent meeting of council, councillor Gobaisi, please?
Thank you, I have a notice of motion. That a year-end surplus or deficit number from the fourth quarter results be provided on the agenda to council at the budget meeting to be held. On January seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. If this is not, if this is not doable due to number not being compiled by that date. This information must be received to council no later than the meeting of January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and, um, madam clerk will handle that, I, I probably go to the regular council meeting. Or the budget, I couldn't handle that. Um, confirmation by law, um, the bylaw twenty twenty, are there any other notice of motions we bring brought forward, excuse me, at a subsequent meeting of council? Thank you very much, councillor Gobaisi, for utilizing that process, the bylaw twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one to confirm the proceedings, council. Bylaw twenty twenty-one dash one twenty-one to confirm the proceedings, council meeting held this day, the sixth of December, be read a first, second, third, and final reading at the mayor and clerk be, and hereby authorized to sign the same, place corporate seal there on two. Moved by Counselor Parker, seconded by Counselor Luciani, discussion, all those in favor? Post, the resolution is carried, and, uh, motion to adjourn. Counselor Roseheart. Counselor Luciani. Uh, we will stand adjourned at eleven thirty, thanks everyone for your attention and your attendance, and we look forward to those future deliberations. Stay safe.